Good evening. I'm going to call this meeting to order. This is the Select Board meeting for Monday, May 16th, 2022. My name is Erin Underhill and I am Acting Chair. Our current clerk is Craig Schultz and our newest member is Ellen Rosenfeld, joining us via Zoom. The first thing we have on our agenda is announcements. So what I'd like to do is first just welcome our newest member, Ellen. We're very pleased to have you and excited for your next three years. See what you do. And I know you'd like to say a few words, so go right ahead.
I would, thank you. Can you hear me okay? I just want to say that with my election, we have a new first in Millis and that's the first of a mother and daughter being on the board. And very close to 35 years ago, my mother's last day and my first day. So that's a nice number. And I want to say that if I accomplish half of what she accomplished, I will achieved my goal. So I just want to thank everybody and I really look forward to the next three years. Thank you.
Okay, so the first thing on our agenda is to vote to reorganize the board.
Are you opening for motions?
Hold on, yes.
Okay. I'll make a motion to name Erin Underhill Chair of the Board.
I second that motion. Do I do that?
Yeah.
There's only three of us.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded to name Erin Underhill, the Chair of the Board. Do we have to do a roll call?
Yes.
Yes.
So we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenfeld?
Yes.
And I am staying, right? Okay, I'll say yes then. Okay. I move to make Craig Schultz the Vice Chair of the Board.
You again, Ellen.
I second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded for Craig to be Vice Chair of the Board. Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenfeld?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so that's unanimous as well.
I'll make a motion, name Ellen Rosenfeld, the Clerk of the Board.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to name Ellen Rosenfeld, the Clerk of the Select Board. Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenfeld?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, so that is unanimous. So congratulations, everybody.
Thank you.
The next thing on our agenda is the approval of the Memorial Day Proclamation. So we have, there's going to be, the Memorial Day Ceremony is going to be on Monday, May 30th at 10:30 a.m. at the Town Hall. And we have a proclamation that's read every year. So Mr. Schultz is going to read that for us.
Proclamation. Whereas Memorial Day, originally called Decoration Day, is a day of remembrance for those who have died in the service of the United States of America. Over two dozen cities and towns claim to be the birthplace of Memorial Day. While Waterloo, New York was officially declared the birthplace of Memorial Day by President Lyndon Johnson in May 1966, it's difficult to prove conclusively the origins of the day. Whereas regardless of the exact date or location of its origins, one thing is clear: Memorial Day was born out of the Civil War and a desire to honor our dead. It was officially proclaimed on May 5th, 1868, by General John Logan, National Commander of the Grand Army of the Republic, on his General Order Number 11. "The 30th of May, 1868, is designated for the purpose of strewing with flowers or otherwise decorating the graves of comrades who died in defense of their country during the late rebellion and whose bodies now lie in almost every city, village, or hamlet and churchyard in the land," he proclaimed. The date of Decoration Day, as he called it, was chosen because it wasn't the anniversary of any particular battle. Now therefore, let it be resolved that Millis Select Board do hereby proclaim Monday, the 30th, day of May, 2022, as Memorial Day in the town of Millis and urge all citizens of this community to join in the support of Memorial Day. And it's signed by the three of us.
Thank you very much. Should I be going through that whole schedule or is the 10:30 at the Town Hall appropriate?
Don't we have to vote?
Yeah, you vote on, you vote to.
All right. So we will.
I'll make a motion to accept the proclamation as written.
Okay, second. It's been moved and seconded to accept the proclamation as written. I will pull the Board. Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenfeld? I think that was a yes. I saw her lips move. Okay. And I'm a yes, so it's unanimous.
Yeah, if you'd like to just read the steps and that we'll be posting that on the town's website tomorrow.
Starting at 8:00 a.m.?
Yes.
Okay. So on Memorial Day, which is Monday, May 30th, there's a series of events that take place. At 8:00 a.m. there is a breakfast at the Legion. And then at 9:30 a.m. they will form up at the police station for a short march to Town Hall. And all veterans are welcome and encouraged to participate in the march. At 10:00 a.m. they'll step off from the police station to Town Hall. And at 10:30 arrive at Town Hall and the Memorial Day Ceremony begins. And that should last about an hour, concluding at 11:30. And everyone's welcome to attend.
And we will post.
And it will be posted.
That schedule on the town's website tomorrow.
Beautiful, thank you. Okay, so the next thing on our agenda is the appointment of DPW seasonal workers. Mr. McKay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is an annual appointment. I would ask that you allow the town administrator to appoint Brian Nichols of Grove Street in Millis and Christopher Goke of Hilltop Street in Millis, both as seasonal workers. They will be starting on June 1st and the appointment will last through September 30th. Both of them will need physicals, which they both know that. This is, like I said, this is all covered under the Personnel Plan, but the salaries are already baked into the DPW budget. So the funding is there.
Madam Chair? Oh, I'm sorry.
Good, we have one more position if anybody out there is still looking. Some high school kid.
All right, Madam Chair. I am requesting at this time that the Board ratify my appointment of Brian Nichols of 47 Grove Street, Millis, and Christopher Goke of 16 Hilltop Street in Millis to the position of seasonal summer help, contingent upon a successful physical.
I'll make a motion that we ratify the appointment of Brian Nichols and Christopher Goke by the town administrator, subject to the DPW department positions as listed, subject to a successful physical.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to appoint Brian Nichols and Christopher Goke pending a physical for seasonal summer help for the DPW. I'll pull the Board. Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenfeld?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so that is unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, you're running a little ahead of schedule.
I'm speeding the schedule up. Come on, we're moving here.
So I recommend perhaps going to Item 115, the appointment of a Planning Board Associate Member.
There it is.
It's immediately following.
Yep, George Yerid. Okay, great. Okay. So we're going to move ahead just one in the agenda because we're a little bit early. But at the regularly scheduled meeting of the Planning Board, held on Tuesday, May 10th, 2022, the Board has suggested that there's that Mr. George Yerid become an Associate Member and continue to serve on the Board. They had voted unanimously to recommend this appointment. And tonight we will vote to ratify that appointment for Mr. Yerid. Actually, you are making the appointment and not ratifying. I'm making the appointment. The Select Board is actually making the appointment. We are making the appointment.
I move we appoint George Yerid as the, is it Associate Position? Associate Member of the Planning Board.
I second.
Nice, okay. So it's been moved.
I second.
Yes, perfect, thank you. So it's been moved and seconded to appoint Mr. George Yerid to the Planning Board as an Associate Member. I will pull the Board. Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenfeld?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so that is approved unanimously. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I believe that the Town Treasurer is here.
Sure.
If you'd like to move up to that on the agenda for the review and approval of a bond authorization note.
Sure, let's move that up.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Scannell. I am the Treasurer Collector for the town. I am before the Board for the approval of a bond anticipation note. The town sold notes last week, May 11th, for $4,120,000. The purpose of this note is for the following appropriations that were authorized at the November 8th, 2021, Town Meeting. They are as follows: the improvements to the water treatment plant to address excessive levels of PFAS identified in Wells 1 and 2, located at the De Angelis Water Treatment Plant. And then the purchase of two new pieces of equipment. One is an ambulance and the other one is a new fire engine. The borrowing is for a one-year term with a weighted interest average of 2.725%. And the total interest for the year is $112,270. Asking the Board to adopt the vote prepared by Bond Council in connection with the sale and approval of the town's May bond anticipation notes. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Did the Bond Council give us a motion in here to make?
They did, and I put that on my memo.
Yes, right at the bottom of that memo.
Instead of reading the vote.
To adopt the vote prepared by Bond Council in connection with the sale and approval of the town's May bond anticipation.
I didn't bring that memo, I just brought the packet. Yeah, yeah, sorry about that. I just assumed everything's in the packet. Okay. And this is just until we bonded over for the permanent.
Correct, and we'll probably bond within, you know, a year.
Yeah. What's the term on that? I know you won't even guess rates. If you could guess rates, you wouldn't be here.
For bonding?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't want to guess.
Do you have a 20-year term, 30-year term?
Oh, term, yeah, it'll be at least 20, probably 25, yeah. I thought you said rate.
Ellen, do you have any questions over there?
I do not.
Okay, I keep forgetting to ask, I'm sorry.
We just closed a $7 million one at work and a point change between when we started.
I know.
You know, anyway. I'll make a motion to adopt the vote prepared by Bond Council in connection with the sale and approval of the town's May bond anticipation notes.
I second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to adopt the vote prepared by Bond Council for, in connection with the sale and approval of the town's May bond anticipation notes. I will pull the Board. Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenfeld?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so that is approved unanimously.
Thank you. And I left paperwork in the office to be signed.
Okay. Thank you.
We're about one and a half minutes off, Madam Chair. Yeah, that should be pretty quick if you like that.
He's here, right?
Mr. McAvoy is here.
We're going to put everything like a three-minute interval.
I'm sorry.
This is going quicker than we're used to.
I'm sorry.
And just for anybody who's watching, on public hearings, you have to take them at the time they're specified.
You can't take them in advance. Okay, good. He's blowing raspberries back there.
So, Madam Chair, that would be Item 117.
Okay. Mr. McAvoy?
I don't know. Yes, so in your packet, Madam Chair, is an estimate from JAM Corporation, which has been submitted to the Board by the Oak Grove Commission in relation to the playground project. And some additional work has come to light that needs to be done as part of that project. And I don't know if Mr. McAvoy has any specific comments you'd like to make in regards to that change.
Just wanted, when the bids went out, the drainage wasn't taken into consideration. And there's no plans for the current drainage underneath. And it's been in there for 30 years. So when they dig it up, we're afraid they're going to hit it. And right now, it's flowing down to the lower soccer fields. So sometimes when it flows down there, they have to cancel the game. So we want to update it while they're digging up. And then there's some roots on the far side that are lower than the 16 inches that they're going to dig down. So that's why the extra cost is in there. So we just want to get this all set before they start. And just to let everybody know, they're going to be starting June 13th down there. That'll be the start date. And they're going to fence it in the week before. Temporary fence all around the structure, so. But everything else is a go, we're just, that's the only change we're going to need.
And do you happen to know how long the project will take before it's reopened?
Talking eight to 12 days, so we'll say two weeks.
Okay.
We're going to put it out on cable TV and put it on everything, so let everybody know, so.
Okay, great.
But everything is a go right now, so that's why they haven't dug up. We just want to put new drainage in there, so.
Okay. Ellen or Craig, any questions?
I'm all set.
Okay.
The funding source for this is?
This is within the project, it's within the available funds for that project. Because the project came in under estimates.
All right, then no questions beyond that. I'll make a motion that we approve the change order for $11,505.65.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the change order. I will pull the Board. Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenfeld?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so that's approved unanimously.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just wanted to add, I don't know if people are aware that John McAvoy is the new Chair of the Oak Grove Farm Commission.
Congratulations.
And if people don't know him, they can see his face. And just a thank you to Steve McGuinness, who was the Chair for how many years?
Over 20 years since I've been on there, so.
Wow. A long time and did a ton of work for the town. So just a big thank you to Steve on the town's behalf as well.
Great, thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, Madam Chair.
Okay, so now.
So move forward.
So now we're going to have a hearing for an amendment to premises for an all alcohol license at Tangerini's Farm. First, we'll need to open the hearing.
I make a motion, we open the hearing on the alcohol license for Tangerini's Farm.
I'll second. So it's been moved and seconded to open the hearing for the all alcohol license amendment. I'll pull the Board. Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenfeld?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so that's approved and the hearing is open. Ms. Burey. I mean, DiMarzo.
Either one. I answered her whatever.
Karen.
Hi, Karen is fine. So Linda Chirizio, who's one of the owners of Tangerini's, is here. They are filings, they currently have an all alcohol license at the farm. They are simply filing for a change of alteration of premises. They're simply removing the greenhouse from the footprint of where alcohol can be served at this point. And they are proposing that they would like to add a tent instead, where they will be able to serve alcohol. So that is also in this amendment. The only other piece regarding the tent is that they have to get an approval for a building permit for the tent itself. So once they get the approval for the building permit for the tent and it's inspected by the Building Commissioner and the Fire Chief, then they can start serving alcohol in the tent if the Board approves this amendment.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Okay. Linda, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, Karen summed it up, yeah. The tent is like, I mean, pictures are there, so. It's like right next to where we currently serve.
Yeah.
Yeah, looks like a good layout. Okay. Any questions, Mr. Schultz?
I have none.
Ms. Rosenfeld, any questions?
I have none, I fully support this.
Okay. Does anybody in the audience have any questions? Yes.
Confusing for a living union. You know, I support it too, they're a great business. They've done a ton of work down there. And I think they're running it the way Laura and Charlie did. It's really nice. You have, a lot of these farms are going away. It's nice to see that they're expanding and adding more. And they do a great job down there, so I wish them well. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any comments? Sure, come on up. If you could just identify.
I identify myself, Elizabeth Hodgson. I live on Spring Street. And so I just wanted to ask you about timing. So with the serving of alcohol.
Oh, talk.
You got to speak into the mic.
Yeah, sorry. With the timing of the serving of alcohol, what hours would that be? Sorry.
So the service is currently, it's, I think if I remember correctly, we had it 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. However, our regular hours are 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Because we do serve it with breakfast and lunch, which is served at the farm, at the restaurant. So the only time that it would realistically be served past that time would be any special events that we have on the premise. Any, you know, private functions or like a farm-to-table dinner or something like that. That would be, you know, just a different instance. But usually it stops at 3:00. That's the current license that we have, so.
Okay, anybody else have any questions? Okay.
Just a question. Just to be clear, the license extends to 10:00 p.m., but the typical business hours only run until 3:00.
Yes.
I don't want anybody to think it's a 3:00 p.m. license and gang when you have a farm-to-table dinner.
Right.
Yeah, okay. No, I have no questions with it then. I'll move that we accept the amended, oh, sorry. I move to close the hearing.
Okay.
Thank you. You had a second, Ellen.
Ellen, you want a second?
Yes, I second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to close the hearing. I will pull the Board. Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenfeld?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so the hearing is now closed. Mr. Schultz?
I'll make a motion that we approve the amended license for Tangerini's Spring Street Farm.
I second.
I'm just going to add an amendment that we're approving the license pending the approved building permit for a tent, which includes inspection by the Fire Chief and Building Commissioner. All right, so I will pull the Board. Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenfeld?
Yes.
Okay, and I'm a yes, so that passes unanimously. Awesome. Thank you.
He spoke well.
Thanks, Linda.
Okay, so. The next thing, the next thing we have on the agenda is the acceptance of mitigation payments for water sewer gateway at Millis.
Back again. Madam Chair, in front of you have a letter from Daniel American. He's the P.E. in charge of Legacy Engineering. He's representing Gateway of Millis, that's 232 through 248 Main Street. They came in front of the Board and the Board approved a water and sewer hookup fee connection for this development. It's a 48-unit development. And as part of the, what we're calling a mitigation cost for each unit, between the developer, myself and the town administrator, we agreed upon, for your approval, is a $2,000 per unit mitigation. And that would be split through water and sewer. That is not, also, that does not include the $2,420 water tie-in fee plus the $250 meter fee and the $4,095 per unit. So it's, I think if I add it up correctly, it's $6,795 plus the $2,000 each, so it's $8,765. The mitigation costs will be split evenly between water and sewer. That's what, I believe the town administrator will speak after me, but that's what we, you know, we agreed upon. And that's what Dan did put in the letter.
Excellent, thank you.
So Madam Chair, this is, this was discussed at a prior meeting, I believe, one of the last times Mr. American came before you. So this is just a formal proposal as a follow-up to that. And as the DPW Director has said, these amounts are actually in addition to the regular fees that are required as part of water and sewer hookups. And yes, I agree, the division as stated in here of funds makes sense and is what's recommended from the Board to decide.
Okay, excellent. Any questions, Ellen or Craig?
I, so this. So this would basically go into the fund balance and theoretically offset cost to ratepayers. Depending on how it goes. I'm not going to promise a rate cut, but it's going into the same pot of money. So we figure out how much money we have, need or anything else.
That's correct, that's correct.
It's got extra $48,000.
It will certainly help if there are capital items down the road. It's less funds we have to ask the ratepayers to put forward to accomplish that.
And Madam Chair, if I could just give a brief update on the project. I know that this is moving faster than anything that we see in Millis. I know that they've clear-cut the area for one of the buildings. They're going to build them, three separate buildings, one at a time. So that, some of these funds, we should probably see within this year.
Oh, great.
It's good.
Excellent, thank you.
I'll make a motion that we accept, if we're ready for motions.
Sure.
I'll make a motion that we accept the mitigation payments for 232, 248 Main Street.
I second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to accept the mitigation payments for the water sewer gateway at Millis. I will pull the Board. Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenfeld?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so that is unanimously approved.
Very good, thanks. Thank you.
So we're running ahead.
She is here.
But she's here, so if you're ready. Sorry, running way ahead. Yes, please.
So last time, I had to, so I have to, I have to admit that this poor lady had came in last time, one of our last meetings, thought she was on the agenda because I had sent her an email saying she was on the agenda. But then I did not put her on the agenda, so the poor thing came and sat here and she's sitting there and she's like, what am I, odd? So thank you so much for coming back and I completely apologize. We're thrilled to have you.
It's like our life, it's the COVID pivot. Like this is just what we do at this point. So thank you so much for having me. So my name is Jennifer Knight Levine. I'm the Executive Director and Co-Founder of the SAFE Coalition. So the SAFE Coalition is a nonprofit organization that was started six years ago in Franklin, really born out of the opioid epidemic. Really, we just wanted a small support group at the YMCA for parents who were impacted. And that has really grown over six and a half years. And so that's kind of why I'm here today. So we are doing a lot of work in Millis and I just kind of want you all to be aware in case you hear mumbles and grumbles of the SAFE Coalition. So really, right now, we have three phases of the organization. We have adolescent wellness, family recovery, and collaborative care. And that collaborative care piece for right now is really what we're doing in Millis. We do a lot of work with Millis Police and Millis Fire. And it's been phenomenal. Those two chiefs are amazing and incredible. And they call and text and are so open to any and all ideas that we have about working with folks that they need in the community to really try and get them to the path of treatment and support versus other paths that maybe have not worked out for them in the past. that maybe have not worked out for them in, in the past. So, really, I'm just here today to kind of share that we're here, we're doing some work in Millis, we're doing work with Millis residents, we are working with some of the middle and high school-aged youth, and in that, we're doing a lot of substance use cessation. So in those three categories that I mentioned, one was adolescent wellness. And under adolescent wellness, we've really taken a strong focus on social-emotional support as it relates to substance use. So what does that mean? It means that as soon as kids went back to school, we saw a huge increase in vaping and substance use on campus. Oftentimes, that leads to an increase in suspensions, and we know by working with kids that even if kids are struggling with substance use and they get suspended, they're probably gonna increase their use while they're at home. So what we've tried to do is create a suspension alternative program or a private referral. So if a mom and dad find that their child is struggling with substances, they can offer for them to come to SAFE. Maybe they're not comfortable with them being out of school for two days. We'll work with them in the afternoons or in the evenings. And so we've been working with a few teens in the community in that regard, and then also providing conversations around treatment styles. What is clinical therapy? What do we do in the meantime while we're on a waitlist? How do we get them the right support? How do we wrap around our other children and our, our other family members? And so that kind of leads into that family recovery piece. So as we've been working with families over the last few years, we've really recognized that even if there's only one person in the family struggling, that the entire family is impacted. So we have three different support groups for parents, we have a grandparents-raising-grandchildren support group, we have an adult sibling support group. And so these are kind of what the ideas that we're trying to communicate with, you know, all of the, the leaders of the community, that we are a resource, we're here, we are a nonprofit, we don't accept insurance, and we don't accept private pay. Every single one of our services is completely free to anyone who calls and requests. So really, we're driven by grants and donations, and that's kind of how we wanna stay. When we started this, we were, like, we just, we just wanna provide as many resources as we can to the community that are thorough and significant and sustainable. Now, coming back from COVID, what we were not expecting is this huge lag of availability of clinical support for teens, for families, for adults. So us not accepting insurance actually provides either a break in between. So if someone signs up for clinical support but there's a three-month waitlist, we can come in and provide care, or we can provide secondary support if someone is already seeing a therapist. So I'm just here today to kind of share who we are and what we do. I think I met you yesterday. So yeah, so we've worked with Millis Fire, Millis Police, the Senior Center a few times. We were at the fair yesterday, which was awesome. My kids didn't wanna leave. And we've had a few residents volunteer to wrap gifts for us. So I just, I just wanted to kind of say hello and have you know kind of who we are and what we do if you hear the Safe Coalition name anywhere around town. So have it answer any questions you have.
Excellent.
No, I was familiar.
I have a question. Oh, go ahead.
Oh, hello.
No, please, go ahead, Ellen. I was just saying, I don't have questions.
Well, you seem to have everything so in control, it's amazing, but do you need anything from us? Do you need more introductions? Do you need anything?
I just need you to know we're here, and if you know that the community members need support, like, send them our way if you can. I mean, that's, we try to be as open and available as possible. And so the majority of our board has been with us since we started six years ago. Half the board has lived experience. Many of the staff or, and/or full-time volunteers have lived experience. So we just wanna wrap around community members, and right now, we feel like if people don't know who we are, that's on us. So we wanna put ourselves out there as much as possible, and, and going to community leadership is really where it starts. So we wanna get folks before they have an interaction with police or fire or the Senior Center. And so if we can, we can all do that together, that would be awesome.
Madam Chair? Yes. Sorry. Jen, do you work at all with our Board of Health Department? Do you work with John McVeigh?
So, so funny, he called about a mutual person that we were all working with, and he was fabulous on the phone. So we did a quick introduction on the phone a few months ago, and he was awesome. And he's, yeah, he's been great.
Okay, good. I was just gonna say.
Just so you know.
And then if you have information that you think would be appropriate for our website, maybe, or a place where you think this should go? I don't, maybe the police already have something, but maybe we need something on our page as well that you think makes sense?
We should definitely put something on our page.
Yeah, if you could send me an email with some ideas, we can kind of look at some ideas, and we're happy to do that.
Okay. That's awesome. Yeah, that would be great. Yeah, that's great. And we have trifolds, too, that I can, I can bring as well.
Perfect.
I do have one question. Do you guys do any, anything like presentations to, like, high school students, like, in the auditorium or something?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah?
We're all about it. Yeah, well, and, you know, we really wanna come alongside the teens and say, like, listen, we know that things are happening, we work with kids all the time, like, let's talk about this stuff. And we really wanna educate kids to make better decisions on their own before it leads to a more challenging decision later on. So, yeah, absolutely. We work with a lot of the other local high schools, either as a presenter in health classes or providing like a social-emotional program within the school day. So each, each school system is so different. So, yeah, but we would beyond love to do that. Yeah.
Okay, great. Did you land on?
No, I haven't spoken before.
Okay. It looks like we may have a, another problem.
Oh, sorry. That's fine.
No, you stood right there.
Oh, okay.
You stood right there.
All right. I don't know what to do.
I just wanted to let you know that I've had the.
Oh, I'm Joyce Boyardi, 206 Orchard Street, also Finance Committee, Recreation Department, Town Mayor, I don't know. I've had a very wonderful experience with Jen. I mean, I.
Thank you.
No. I'm telling you, I, I helped, our, our Fire Department and Police Department do a wonderful job at Christmas time, and kudos to them because they provide gifts for children who don't have, or families that don't have the means to be able to provide gifts. There was a surplus because of the generosity of our townspeople. There was a surplus that was able to go over to Jen's. Problem was, she didn't have enough people to wrap.
Not even clothes.
Not even clothes. There was a room probably the size of this room that had ceiling-to-wall gifts.
Wow.
But needed people to be able to go over and wrap. And fortunately, we were able to get a number of people to come over, businesses, just single folks, you know, just saying, hey, guys, we need your help. It was amazing, the turnout, but was, but was also amazing was the items that, the quality. It wasn't your five-and-dime gift. We're talking, like, gifts, a box of dolls that were, like, $300 people donated. And what was really lovely is she made sure that every family was accounted for. And it was, it was separated by age, it was separated by need, and then it was separated by family. And this girl, I'm telling you, to keep the positive attitude she had was amazing. The other thing is there were kids that came in, and my naivety, I didn't realize what the Coalition did. And I thought this was just some young lady who had come in to help wrap. So I went, hi, what's your name? And she looks at me like, you don't have. But she was somebody there for help. And it was okay. She was really sweet, she understood. Jen talked to her. She says, you know, if you wanna be there, it's fine. If you wanna leave, it's fine. This kid was great, and it was a, it was a security blanket for her to be able to go there.
Jen, you can share.
Yeah, to be there, no name, unanimous, but to feel that she was welcomed and embraced. And that's what Jen's group does. And that's what I saw in two days of wrapping. So I just want the community to be aware of what she does and take part. And she will always make sure there's some place for help. If she can't provide the help, she'll make sure there is help. So I just want you all to know that between the Fire Department, the Police Department, and her, kudos.
Excellent. Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. You're awesome.
You're welcome.
I mean, it was unbelievable, the amount of people that she brought to wrap, so. But yeah, so that's all. I have any other questions or anything?
Yeah, can I ask one?
Yeah.
One question, Erin?
Sure. Yes.
Where is your presence, Jen? What's your website? What do, what do I find you? Got it. SafeCoalitionMA.org.
Absolutely, yep.
Perfect.
And then same thing for Facebook, too.
And you're located?
In Norfolk. We cover Millis.
Perfect.
Yeah. So, awesome.
Excellent. And if you need help with anything, again.
Yeah.
Just, you know, say the word.
Yeah, definitely. Thank you so much. It was so nice meeting you in real life, you know, beyond the table yesterday.
Yeah, it was nice.
Awesome. Well, thank you so much, everybody. Have a great night. Thanks for kind of listening.
Take care.
Thanks, Jen.
Thanks.
Okay. So then, next thing is, under our open session, is an acceptance of the gift of the Veterans' Memorial Building sign.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll, I'll start on this. So last fall, in discussions with Karen and Jim McKay, in looking at the, the needs of this building, it came, it's become quite apparent to us that we do need a replacement sign for the front of this building. And we did talk about the, the difficulty in being able to fund these types of things. So after discussion, we did, or I did reach out to Ellen Rosenfeld last fall and explain to her our need and asked if she'd been generous with the community before, if she'd be interested in assisting us and donating a sign to the town. And she said she would be happy to do that. And I said we were looking to install the sign next summer. We did get an initial estimate for the cost of the sign at $7,500. And we were hoping to put the sign in this summer, which we still are. And luckily, even though the price of all kinds of things is going up, we did get confirmation last week that the Cavalero signs will honor that, that price of $7,500. So with that, I am asking the board this evening to accept the gift from Ellen Rosenfeld for a new sign for the front of the Veterans Memorial Building. And I don't know, Karen, if you have anything else to add?
I just wanted to add, just something to add. If you look at, just not to confuse anybody, the Lions are also working on raising funds for a sign in front of Town Hall. That's a different sign. That would be an electronic sign board that would kind of come across with different events and things that are happening in town. That's not a sign that would say Veterans Memorial Building. This is a wooden sign, like he was saying, at Police and Fire. And the one that we have is actually hard to notice because it was put in parallel to the street a long time ago. Signs are supposed to be perpendicular to the street so that you can see them when you come by, which has always been a pet peeve of mine. So thanks to Jim McKay and the DPW, what they're gonna do is, once this is created, they're going to dig up the existing granite posts, help to install the sign in the right direction. So this is win-win.
Great.
And thanks, Ellen.
You're welcome.
All right. I'll start with, no, no questions.
Okay.
You?
No.
You're right asked.
Yeah.
I'll start with a thank you, and I'll finish up with the motion. I move that we accept this gift, this very generous gift, for a new Veterans Memorial Building Town Office's Community Center sign made possibly own. So thank you.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to accept this gift. Thank you, Ellen. I will pull the board. Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenfeld, you.
It's up to you whether you wanna vote or abstain. That's your call.
I don't know. What should I do? Yes, yes.
Okay. And I'm a yes. So it's unanimous, we accept the gift. And again, thank you very much. Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, congratulations. Congratulations, Selectman Rosenfeld, and thank you for the sign. You know, if you notice, the one in front of the fire station, it's unbelievable. So it's gonna look really nice and be in the right position, be able to see it. So thank you.
Okay. So the next item on our agenda is the review approval of all alcohol license change of manager for the AmVets Post 495.
Sorry about that. I think that's me again. So again, this is another amendment. This one did not have to have a hearing because they're not actually making any changes that would affect any of the neighbors. That's why you have to actually have a hearing for some of these license changes. This is an amendment to the change of manager only. So this is going to be John Wanders, who actually happens to work for our DPW as well. And the AmVets have asked him to step on as the manager, and he has done so. So it will just be approval of the board as the local licensing authority. You're just approving the amendment.
Okay. Any questions?
No.
Ellen, any questions?
No.
Okay.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the AmVets liquor license with the change of manager to John Wanders.
So it's been moved and seconded to approve the all-alcohol license change of manager for AmVets Post 495. I'll pull the board. Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenfeld?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So that is approved unanimously. Thank you. The next item is to review approve of facilities agreement with the school.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As the board is quite aware, we've had discussions about this over the past four or five months in the budget process of actually bringing together the facilities maintenance between the school department and the rest of the departments in the town. We've had some great dialogue with the school administration, as well as the school committee. And the agreement you see in your packet was put together by both the school and town administration and has been approved for recommendation by the school administration and by the administration here. And this will cover the maintenance of, of all major town buildings. So the school facilities maintenance department would be handling, in addition to the Clyde Brown Elementary and the Millis Middle High School, they'd also be taking on the maintenance of the Veterans Memorial Building, the library, the police station, Niagara Building, and some limited, limited maintenance work at the fire station. And the funding for this was appropriated at the town meeting. I did speak with the superintendent of schools, who indicated that the school committee would take this up for approval at their next meeting, assuming the select board approves it at your meeting this evening. So I am recommending the board approve the agreement as written in the packet, and this would go into effect on July 1st. And I think it would be a tremendous improvement for the maintenance of the town buildings.
Okay. Excellent. Any questions, Ellen?
Nope.
Craig?
No questions. I just wanna comment, I think the way you spelled out the budget difference is quite good. If it ever does need to be separated, we have a roadmap back to neutrality.
Yes, yes. And, and just wanna wrap up by thanking the school administration, especially for their help and cooperation in this process, and obviously to the school committee for their willingness to work with us on moving forward with this great improvement.
Awesome.
Great. And this is going to just be signed by the town administrator.
Yes, I'm seeking, seeking a vote to approve and to authorize me to sign it on behalf of the board.
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement with the school committee and authorize the town administrator to sign on behalf of the board.
Second?
Okay, great. It's been moved and seconded to approve the facilities agreement with the school and authorize the town administrator to sign on behalf of the board. I will pull the board. Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenfeld?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So that is unanimously approved.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next item is the review approval of animal control officer intermunicipal agreement.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As the board is aware, we've had a intermunicipal agreement with the town of Medway for many years to, for our regional animal control services, which are handled very well. I do have experiences in other communities and other situations where animal control services can be a real nightmare. But here, things have gone very well. Our new animal control officer and assistant are doing a great job. And Medway attests to that as well. And we've had some discussions with the town of Medway in regards to this. And you'll see the agreement in your packet. It's, it is a three-year agreement. And the town of Medway Select Board has reviewed and approved the agreement. And the last step in the process would be for the select board this evening to approve it as well. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that the members of the board may have. And want to thank Karen for all her work in, you know, working on this and working with their assistant town administrator in Medway in putting this together and making sure this is done in time for the end of this fiscal year.
Thank you. Craig or Ellen, any questions?
Nope.
Are there any significant devia, deviations from this, from the previous one to this one?
Yes, the, the main change is the, 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 the town of Millis is picking up the health insurance. However, in, because of that, the percentages have switched.
Okay.
Before, the percentages were 55-45 Medway.
Yeah.
Now, they're 60-40 Medway. So Medway's picking up a larger portion. And they're also picking up that percentage of all personnel-related costs.
Okay.
So it is, it's a net, it's a slight net gain to the town of Millis. I won't say it was a large one, but it was a slight gain.
Let's not say that too loud. Let's say there's no loss to the town of Millis.
Yes, so they're not listening to us too closely in Medway. But it was a very fair adjustment. And they were interested in having us pick up the insurance.
Okay.
As part of that discussion, they were also willing to pick up a higher percentage.
Okay. Then I'll make a motion. Are you going to be signing this, or will the...
The chair, so you're authorizing the chair of the board to sign it.
I'll make a motion that the board approve the inter-town agreement for animal control between Medway and Millis and authorize the board chair to sign.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded.
Second.
Oops, sorry. Approve the animal control officer intermunicipal agreement and authorize the chair to sign. I will poll the board. Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenfeld?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so that is unanimous.
Great, thank you very much.
Madam Chair, I was just gonna note, too, that this is, we also have an intermunicipal agreement with the town of Norfolk for the IT director. So Craig, there were some changes to this to just model after that one. So this is, this is a much, this is a much better agreement.
Okay.
Thanks, thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the annual review and approval of the select board operating policies and procedures. Mr. Gazinski?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this, the board's policies, operating policies and procedures was put into place, I think about four years ago, maybe five. Time is flying. And as part of that process, the board regularly reviews and approves the policies on an annual basis. And so the policies, procedures are in your packet for your review, comment, change, or merely reratification. So if the board has any questions or concerns or would like to make any changes, certainly now would be an appropriate time to have that discussion. Having said that, the board may take it up at any time, but we do bring it up this time of year as a regular piece of evidence to make sure it's not, it's not left unreviewed for a long period of time.
I do have one question. So within the policies and procedures, it's, it's more of a, it, it's not necessarily extremely specific. So for instance, the, there's a section that talks about agenda items shall be, and there's a list of agenda items.
Yes.
We, we can deviate from that, right?
Yes, you can.
Without it being a problem?
Yes, you can.
Okay.
The, the chair has the ability to deviate from that.
Okay.
This is just the guideline for that.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
So certainly, it's just to provide a framework for the board.
Okay.
And, and if, if board members feel that, you know, something that's here is not as necessary, or something should be added, the board has that authority. This is really to provide a guidance document.
Guidance, okay. Do you have any questions?
No, I just recall that the clerk typically reads the whole nine pages aloud, Ellen.
Do we? No. Oh, my goodness.
I'm just joking, Ellen.
I'm good with that, with what we have.
All right, so any questions, Ellen?
No.
Nope.
Nope, you're good. Okay, you?
I'm good.
Good. Okay.
So I would just ask, again, as a regular course of business for the board, just to vote to ratify this for the year. And again, if, if any members of the board feel there's something in here that you'd like changed, you don't have to wait till next May to take it up again.
Right.
You could take, you could ask the chair to put it on any agenda for a discussion. But again, I don't think there's been any real change to this in a few years, but it is technically a living document that could be changed.
And this is more of a, the, the hearings that we have to stay on schedule for, as we found out with the farm and in past, we've run ahead, that's state law. That's not something...
That's state law, anyway. There's a lot in here that is state law.
Yeah.
But it, but it's, it provides that guidance that's very pertinent to the work of the board. So it's really emphasized in here that everyone understands that. And it's, the, the board plans on following through with those processes.
All right.
I guess I'll make...
Oh, motion, I'm sorry. I'll make a motion to accept the, I was moving on to the next item already. The, the, I'll make a motion to accept the operating policies and procedures as written.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the select board operating policies and procedures as written. I'll poll the board. Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenfeld?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so that passes unanimously.
Great, thank you.
The next item is the review and approval of the water sewer commitment for April 2022 and January 2022.
Oh, and there's one more, actually.
For the quarterly bill run.
And...
There's a, it should be, I'm sorry, January 2022?
April 2022.
Yeah, and then the fiscal year fourth quarter, which is just not listed, but that's fine.
Yeah.
And I will note, I'm sorry, Mr. Gazinski, that there was a last-minute change to the April run. It's just that this total was not correct. So this is the corrected total to vote.
All right, so, Madam Chair, so the first of the three items is the April 2022 commitment for water and sewer. And the actual total for that is $2,922.02. So I ask the board to vote to approve that, that commitment.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we approve the April water sewer commitment of $2,922.02.
Second?
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the April water and sewer commitment to the collector for $2,922.02. I'll poll the board. Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenfeld?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, that passes unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And the next item is the water and sewer commitment for January of 2022 in the amount
Okay, I can do it if you want.
No, I got it. I just want to, yeah. I'll make a motion that we approve the January 2022 water and sewer department commitment to collector of $1,618.22.
Second?
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the January water and sewer commitment in the amount of $1,618.22. I'll poll the board. Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenfeld?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, that passes unanimously.
Great, thank you. And the last item is the approval for the quarterly bill run commitment for the fourth quarter in the amount of $679,238.04. So 679-238.04.
I'll make a motion that we approve the fourth quarter water sewer bill run for $679,238.04.
Second?
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the quarterly bill run for the fourth quarter commitment for water sewer in 600, in the amount of $679,238.04. I'll poll the board. Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenfeld?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so that passes unanimously.
Great, thank you very much.
The next thing we have is the approval of draft minutes from March 25th.
These are, Maureen did these, actually?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from March 25th as written.
Second, it's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of March 25th, 2022 as written. I'll poll the board. Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenfeld?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so that is approved.
Great, thank you.
All right, at this time, we are going to go into executive session. So we will be moving to go into executive session for the purpose of conducting strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with union personnel, SEIU, and AFS CME, and to discuss strategy with respect to litigation for site investigation. Once we come out of executive session, we will be just coming out for the purpose of adjourning the open session. So I will take a motion to go into executive session.
I move to go into executive session to conduct a strategy session in preparation for negotiations with union personnel and to discuss strategy with respect to litigation.
Second?
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to go into executive session. I will poll the board. Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenfeld?
Yes.
And I am a yes. So thank you, everybody.
Okay, so Karen, I'm closing out and coming back.
Yep, you can, you can shut down and then go into the other executive session that I went in.
Okay.
You're in, you should be okay. Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks.
Have a good night.
All right, I'm gonna take a two-second break.
Sure.
Excellent job.
One hour.
Yeah, this is the, this lulled me into sense of the first year, too. The first meeting's always a little quick.